All right. You are on.
Okay.
First item on our agenda is the pleasure meeting.
My pleasure.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the input tonight.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any objection? Okay. The agenda is adopted. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I move that we approve today's consent agenda.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll sign up that.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Okay. At this point, we're going to declare open our supplemental budget hearing. Okay? You have been given, for information purposes, a copy of the annual financial report. Marina would be there to make a report on it to all of us, but she is ill and unable to join us. She has given me some information on this supplemental budget, and I'll read it, and then we can do a motion. Sorry, you can't see that. A resolution adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2024 and 2025, and making supplemental budget appropriations. Oregon local budget law allows the local government to prepare a supplemental budget when an occurrence or condition that was not known at the time the budget was prepared requires a change in financial planning. And that's ORS 294.471. The governing body must adopt a resolution to adopt the supplemental budget and make any necessary appropriations. This resolution proposes a supplemental budget for the Capital Projects Fund. A significant amount of unexpected beginning fund balance has been identified, which allows capital projects such as the Blossom Gulch renovation and Milner Crest move take place prior to the which allows them to take place prior to the beginning of the next fiscal year. This allows for the board goal of expanding alternative education to begin sooner than anticipated and allow for the increased enrollment within the 2025-26 school year. The supplemental budget is needed because these costs were not included in the original 2024-25 budget. The supplemental budget increases the support services function allocation in the Capital Project Fund from $504,967 And the facilities acquisition facilities and acquisition function allocation from $720,000 to $1,320,000, for a total increase of $1.2 million. Okay, that's the explanation.
Okay, and so we need a resolution adopting a supplemental budget. Be resolved that the Board of Directors for Coos Bay School District hereby adopts a supplemental budget for fiscal year 24-25 and the Capital Project Fund. So moved. Can I read the second one, too?
Yes.
All together?
I want a brief one here.
Okay. Also, in this motion is resolution making supplemental appropriations be resolved that the supplemental amounts shown below are hereby appropriated year beginning July 1st, 2024, as follows. No, I think I need to read the whole thing, right?
I think you referenced it.
Yeah, I referenced it. So that's on the floor.
We have a second. Is there any discussion? Again, this money is just being moved around so that we can accomplish projects that we've got outstanding.
So I did just have a question.
Yes.
It's a little hard without reading it, but I'm just trying to wrap my brain around those numbers, which they
Are big?
Yeah, and it's not sticking very well in my brain, so. But so my thing is that basically this allocation is we have extra funds available, and we want to move it so that we can help accomplish the goal around basically the move of an administration to Blossom Gulch and some of the necessary things to get this ready. And then the other funds to help address the needs at Milner Crest to get it ready as well for
For educational purposes.
And the total amount of those expenditures is how much?
1.2.
Yeah, there are two.
No, that's the total of the
It's tiny up there.
It's tiny up there. You have very good eyes.
I don't know about that, but it is capital funds that it was a beginning balance, the big beginning balance, so I don't
That's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not taking funds from somewhere else, too.
There's actually two funds, right? We have an extra million dollars, but one, each of the two funds got 500,000, so we will have a total of 2 million.
Yes. David, do you want to see this up close?
I can see it now, but I couldn't see it before. Still, again, my brain takes a while. The process is on the fly, so that's why I just want to be clear. So I guess I'm not following what Arnie was saying, though, that
I'm saying there's two funds.
All right.
One of them is 1.3, one is 1.5, or 1.2 and 1.1. They're actually 2.3 million dollars if they're available to spend. One for
Yeah, the Capital Project Fund goes from 504 to 1.1. And the facilities and acquisitions function goes from 720 to 1.3. And I think if you add those together, you're going to come out with the 1.2 million.
She was talking about the increase.
2.4 million. And the one million you're talking about is the extra money that was moved into those.
Right.
Oh, okay.
That 1.2 is just
It's just the increase.
Because we had already looked at the other funds, so we don't need to look at that. So we're just looking at the increase in those for the capital.
So 1.2 is the amount of increase
Yeah.
In those two funds.
In those two funds, yes.
Together, yeah.
The other, if I may, the other project that is in here is Sunset.
Yes.
So as we go through, right, we if money wasn't an issue, we would do everything for every school we can, so we have to prioritize. And so our next priority, and remember, Buzar has been in these conversations, Sunset is a school that needs some investment in terms of the basics, paint, lighting, carpet, their library. So that's another facilities project that's a priority.
Yes. We did the roots, right?
No, it's not done.
It is not. We passed it.
We passed it. We passed those steps.
Okay. Motion is on the floor to adopt Resolution Number 2025-01, which is a budget, supplemental budget adoption.
We have a second.
And we have a second.
I said.
Yeah. Is there any further discussion? No, hearing none. David?
I.
Diane?
Hi.
Kim?
Hi.
I.
Arnie? I vote I also. Motion passes. Moving right along. Mallory Yora.
Right, so I'm going to talk about all the major events in the last month of February. So first off, with sports, our swim team went to state. The girls achieved fourth, and the guys got seven. Boys wrestling had 12 wrestlers qualify for state, and five of them became state placers. Arian Wright placed second, Skylar Flau placed fourth, Garen Castro placed fifth, Reese Height placed second, and Trane Forbes Oh, and Reese Height and Trane Forbes placed sixth in all in their respective weight classes. Our questioning team is currently first in districts, and several members already qualified for state. They have one more district meet this year, one the first weekend in April. Both boys and girls basketball won lead. Unfortunately, the girls lost in the first round of the state playoffs. However, the boys are competing this weekend at Phoenix. Cheer placed second state for the second year in a row, which is major accomplishment, so off to them. Our dance team upbeat placed first in both their categories at Sheldon earlier this month, and more recently at Loma placed first and third. Mila Johnson won the Drill Down, which is like the military drill like ceremony type thing, where they follow the instructions that are given to them. And if you don't follow them correctly, you're out. And they have state lead this month. Our spring sports are starting, which includes track, boys and girls tennis, golf, and not basketball, baseball, softball, and boys volleyball.
This is scheduled.
What?
That's not in show.
He's being honorary towards me. I'm not really You're doing wonderful.
For clubs, our speech and debate club was second state overall, and four members qualified for nationals. Ty Bellzer, Sam Quant, Arlo Holm, and Alicia Pogre. Our archery club, which we started this year, won state in indoor state championships, so started this year with one state and the indoor, which is new, is what I've heard, which is interesting. And then OBOP, which is Oregon Battle of the Books, regional is coming up for them. And so wish some luck. Two band students qualified for solo performance. Junior Brittany Herrera, who plays sax, and sophomore percussionist Addison Nels. There's an upcoming choir concert this Wednesday, the 12th at 7:00. And also at 7:00 next Tuesday, the 18th, is a band concert. So if you are open that night, please come and support both groups. Two weeks ago, Mila Johnson, who is a junior, won Miss Coos County team, and Erica Akers won Miss Pacific Shores team. Recent school events that have been happening were 71 seniors applied for local scholarships, which is 16 more than last year, so that's really good accomplishment. And seniors have an opportunity to go to SWAC next week for a mock college experience, to like see what it would be like to sit in a college class. OPU came here last Wednesday, so basically all of Oregon public universities came and gave us talk to juniors in different areas of the classroom, which was, from experience, very helpful and really nice to experience. And forecasting for last year took most of last month during advisory, along with going over our four-year plans and transcripts evaluations to see if you're able to graduate, if you're on track or not. The ASVAB is going to be available next week for any student who wishes to take it. Oh, and for juniors and seniors, 51 people went to SWAC last week on Wednesday, I think it was, to go see a cadaver, which, if you don't know, is a dead body. I chose not to go. I was the one of the class that was not going. Well, actually, two field students. But so a lot of people enjoyed that. I ran, and they saw the lungs inflate and deflate. They saw the heart, obviously, yorma stuff.
No medicine in your future.
And then, okay, so if it's anything other than a person, that'd be great. We're dissecting cats. I'm excited, not people. April is career month, and so they were having a career fair on the 18th. And we also have a new fire science class, which has seven people in it. And if you, and once you finish with said class, you can earn a certification for wildland firefighting, which is pretty, pretty cool.
Yeah.
And so that's pretty interesting, but yeah, no dead bodies. Yeah, Mr. Miles came up, and he goes, "All right, who wants to do it?" Everybody rose their hand, and I was like And he goes, "I know you don't want to do it, Mallory." We saw this tube get stuck up in an esophagus. We watched the whole video. It went down through into the stomach, and I was like this the whole time, like Nope. But everybody else said it was cool.
I feel you.
Say, does anybody have any questions for Mallory?
Great, great, great job.
No, thank you.
Yeah, good job, Mallory.
Okay, we're on to CDEA business.
That's me. Mallory, you did a superb job.
Thank you. I have a little slideshow. Thanks, David. First, I am going to, first, when David goes to the next slide. Members spotlight for the month, I have math teachers at Marshallville Junior High were nominated for their wonderfulness.
What? Wow, I feel fancy. Thank you so much.
So a picture here is Erica Miller, Willie Geiger, and Andrew Price, the three math teachers at the junior high. And I can, and I'll just read reasons why they were nominated. The math teachers at our junior high are doing a lot to encourage students in their success maker work. They delivered rootier floats to recognize growth last week and have been featuring students at assemblies, too. Mr. Price took a group of seventh graders to banden for math counts, and they won first and third, or first through third, and some students qualified for state. I had a couple of questions here, but I was hoping to get answered so I could add some info, but that's what I got. And so I'm assuming success maker was also started as a sprint goal at the junior high as well? Yeah, so I can just speak from experience. It can be really challenging to get students to get 60 minutes a week, and we have to pull out tricks, you know, to get there, so. And I can imagine it gets even harder at the junior high, so. So they're doing some cool stuff to reward those kids that are showing growth and getting their 60 minutes a week as recommended, so bravo to the three math teachers at the junior. Mr. Geiger is new this year, and his wife is a teacher at Milokoma.
Great.
Okay, so as promised last month, we have elections.
Look at
I'm so excited to announce our results. Our new president next year is going to be Glenn Krupp from the high school. Vice President will remain Tracy Kates. Jen Winston is going to move into our secretary position, and Diane Handy will remain at our treasurer role. We have some new reps and some holes in our reps as well, but lots of time to fill those holes. But Chris Green from the high school has stepped into, will step into Now, this doesn't happen until, hopefully you noticed that, until August 1st. But we have to do, you know, elections early. So Jen Winston's will remain the rep at the junior high. We have a couple of new reps at Sunset, as well as an alternate. I am going to move into the role as just a building rep at Milokoma, so I can continue to help Glenn as needed, but not take the position away from Tracy, because that makes sense to me. Lauren Chan will remain the rep at Eastside, and Mary Margaret Stockard at District Office in Little Paris. We, in April, every year, we go to OEAs Representative Assembly, and the four people that are going this April are Mary Margaret Stockard, Tracy Kates, Diane Handy, and myself. And then the National Education Association Representative Assembly is actually going to be in Portland this year. And it's always the week of 4th of July, and Diane Handy will be attending.
Oh, nice.
So can't wait to hear about that. And then, it's a multitasking thing. Doing plugs for negotiations committee, and we're going to make some progress this month. We're going to meet next Monday with you all or your team, your negotiations team, to discuss and bargain our norms for upcoming bargaining. And I think in April, we'll be inviting all the rest, so I'm looking forward to that. We are, you know, committee work. This is kind of, I look at this slideshow as kind of my communication with members as well. And so bylaws work, I wanted to mention because you may have noticed that our new president is has the same last name as our Fed Director. And we might need to look at that. So we're going to, you know, have some bylaws meetings just to discuss how we want to look at representing and supporting our Fed members that may not want to go to their boss's husband. I mean, we just have to have a backup plan for this scenario, so we'll talk about that this spring. And professional development committees, we had started that in the fall, and then we decided to wait until after calendar to get back, and so I'm hoping to get back together soon. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Glenn realizes he needs to be up here doing this every month.
We're not going to tell him anything.
He doesn't seem like the most, like, that he loves
He's going to be doing wonderful.
I know he will.
No, I think he knows. I think he knows. Just a little bit more on that, though, we are I forgot to mention this, but another change that we're going to look at making is rather than the president kind of takes over, does just too many roles, and it's it's just too much, let alone it's not representative enough, you know? So our negotiations committee has been talked to about after negotiations, after we bring in a new contract, they're going to be what is called, unless they've changed the acronym, but Contract I don't remember what it stands for, but CAT Team. And they'll kind of be the ones looking at grievances or complaints to see if we have problems, you know, with the contract, or about holding the contract. So I think that will take a large chunk of the work off the plate of the president, like the president has. Standing alone.
Somebody have any questions before
No, thank you.
Thank you. Ready, Yora? David, would this be appropriate now?
It's at the end. I have it before items, yep.
Appropriate now. I can't hear things like that, not in our interest. Pete Donahue. What you guys are talking about, pretty good news. I'm sorry, you guys know what that, when I'm done talking tonight, I'm going to go ahead and join online. But please get home. So today, I believe this person is actually logged in online, and if you've ever met her, she may never talk to me again for her having her nomination allowed to make it to our board meeting. But Amarel is one of our secretaries at Madison, and she was nominated by a peer at the school. And they just said, "We would like to recognize Amarel for her outstanding commitment to the Madison community." She's a true cornerstone of our school, always welcoming families and students with a warm smile and stepping up whenever help is needed, whether it's supporting student behavior, covering recess duty, or assisting staff. I can tell you, if you've ever been in the office with her, you try and help out and answer a phone, and she's already talked to whoever it is that is trying to even pick up the phone, and seems to be like running back and forth and also assisting whoever needs help at the same time. Like multitasking is definitely one of her strong points. Recently, when discussions arose about starting a food pantry at Madison, Amarel took immediate action. Within a week, she immobilized the right people, engaged with community partners, and set everything into motion. And thanks to her efforts, there moved commercial refrigerators were delivered today, which was when they were nominated. So they have been delivered. And making a huge step forward in supporting our families. And not only that, but she's actually met with a group at Destinations for students to help now go out into the community and ask for assistance in that. And so she's not only taking the time at Madison, but also reaching out to our students and incorporating them in this project and kind of teaching them some skills. Amarel's dedication extends beyond daily responsibilities. During our tsunami warning, she chose to stay behind to ensure that families were remained remain informed about safety and the whereabouts of their children, even when she wasn't quite sure about her own safety at the moment. Madison is a stronger, more connected place because of individuals like Amarel, and her leadership initiative and unwavering commitment to our students and families and our staff embodies the best of our school community. So if you guys see Amarel at Madison, tell her great job, and I'll turn off the phone.
I love her name.
Yes. I put her last name on there. I cannot pronounce it very well, so sorry, Amarel, if you are online or listening. I can call it, but I cannot pronounce it very well. So last week was classified appreciation, oh, experiment. I thought I was controlling it with my computer. Last week was classified appreciation week, and we had decided that we kind of wanted to do something different as a union to kind of celebrate staff, and so we did a Sasquatch hunt. And if you're wondering how we got there, the theme at OSBA was the best in the West. And so when you like look at Western ideas, it's cowboy boots and cowboy hats and stuff. We're like, you know, Pacific Northwest, and we're on the West Coast. Everybody knows that big, but And so we have these signed pin in all of our buildings, and once you found it, you sent out a picture to your fellow classified staff members, and then I'd introduce you in for a drawing. And so we had this pinned at all of the schools, and it was so exciting to like receive those pictures. And we were receiving them on, like, I had asked to send it to classified, and I wish I would have actually said to everybody, because it was so great. And one of my classified staff members, Milokoma pointed out to me today that she would love to see us get back into the routine of when we have a new hire, that the union sends out an email with a photo. So she said that there's people that she knows in the community, that she had no idea were working in our district, and it was so neat to see who's in what building, and so it was fun and slightly successful, and it's also looking at ways of like, how can we also like build that community, even though we all have such different jobs in our different buildings? And so also, a huge congratulations to Loma on his new position, and thank you for, you know, all of the time and effort spent being on our board. But that does leave us a vice president vacancy, which our current board is looking at on kind of how to kind of fill that gap that we have. He was also on our negotiation team. So just kind of looking at our language, and so hopefully by next month, I can let you guys all know what we have decided to do. With my host's current list, we do have 146 classified staff members working for the Space Bowl district. And then I thought it might be fun to get the board involved for classified appreciation week and helping me with the raffle. So we have a Bigfoot puzzle and an Oregon cup as our prize, one of our prizes. And then we have two Amazon gift cards, so please. I use them to the chair. I'll let you pull the first one, and this is going to be for the Bigfoot guests.
Angie Saylor.
Yes, and she is at Marshall Junior High. Perfect. Honey, do you want the guy who gets to the clip? Oh, I want to spread it around.
Okay, yeah. Moving on down. Pull up the women. It's women's time.
Alyssa Marie.
Yes. Junior High. This is a part of the junior high. So that's for our Amazon gift card.
Somebody else, no.
It's the folded one.
No.
They're all folded.
Oh, okay.
It's with my name over there.
Terry Jo. So did you, you did all this, right? What do you mean, the Sasquatch?
Did you put this together?
Oh, I was watching it go along, and I thought, this is the greatest idea and so fun, and everybody seems And everybody seems to really appreciate it. And I saw some of the emails come back and forth. I think that's amazing. And you need kudos for doing this.
That was our board. That was our union board. We got together and we're talking about, you know, how we want to celebrate and how to get more people involved and kind of play games. And it's a little tricky because you've got, you know, so many different schools in there. So it was a great game.
Okay, well, it's mostly for, I was gonna say, but kudos to you and your board.
That's right.
And thank you for doing this. They're so lucky to have you and your team.
Thank you.
And you didn't personally, right? Okay, good deal. Are you helping just doing everything? You're just?
No, you're a superstar. Thanks, yeah, by word. You know, I always tell people, you're only allowed to look like a superstar because you've got a really good team buying you.
So anybody else have questions for Bree? All right.
Oh, and we negotiate on Thursday. We're, we're up and running for that. Our first, we did our ground rules and up and running on Thursdays from one to four. And it is gonna be in the negotiations. So if any of you guys want to come in and now, you know, it's classified appreciation week and everybody use their words and show so much appreciation and now our actions can match those, that appreciation.
Yes, we appreciate all of the classified.
Okay, we're at Dr. Ainsworth.
Yeah, superintendent's report. As I was listening to Mallory, I kept thinking, I should just give her my report. She would do a great job. Yeah. Yeah, she is superintendent in training. Yeah, so we'll, we'll jump into my report again. Mission statement, board goals, new topic, calendar. We have that on the last board meeting as a discussion item. We look at ratifying the calendar. Blossom Gulch move, mid-year report, funding update, more from, from the state level versus the district level. And then end with good things. David, if you could pass those down. Again, the, the mission statement, I, I like to keep this front and center and make sure we're reviewing it. We, we go over this in our, in our admin meetings. We talk about, a lot of times you'll see mission statements and they just live on the wall. Right? Or they live, they live in a, on a pamphlet, they live in a booklet. It's aspirational, it's ambitious. We want all of them to graduate 100%. You, you don't really want to be in a position where you say, well, 85% of them don't graduate. 85% graduate, 15% don't. Who are the 15%? So it's, it's an aspirational goal. One of the words, they're all important words, but I think one of the words that's, that's critical is the needs. And I believe our, our system, our culture is, is getting better in adapting to those needs in real time. It's really important that we're meeting the needs in real time. If a student is struggling in math, how do we meet that need? If it's attendance, if it's reading, if it's behavior. And not to get too deep into the MTSS system, that could be a whole other board meeting. But really, that's the intent of MTSS. And that predates, that predates just Ainsworth. The elementary schools were, have been doing that for several years. And I, I believe they're a little bit ahead of our secondary schools in MTSS, which is the case in most districts. But really, it comes down to them trying to meet those needs in real time. Board goals, just a, just a quick review. Raise the academic expectations. We, we are doing that. We have lots of conversations. We have lots of really, really good work going on in terms of what, what are the, what are the mechanics to do that? It's, it's, it's not necessarily a secret. There are very tangible, concrete things you can do to increase the academic expectation. You've heard me say, our kids at Kuzbay are as smart as any other kids in the country. Our kids deserve as much opportunity, as much access. They have as much talent and as much potential as any other school district. It's us adults believing that our kids can do it. Report progress on goals and establish data systems. I feel like we're, we're doing that really well at the admin level. I think our elementary teachers do a good job of looking at data. Sometimes it's easier for them because their data is a little more live in terms of diagnostic. Investigate and establish needs for additional programs. That's the one of the four I, I feel like we're a little bit behind on because it is, additional programs is a, is a budget item. It's a negotiations item. And I may need a lot of stakeholder input to figure out what the board and the community want in terms of additional programs. And then the last one really is reflected in one of the reasons we're moving to Blossom Gulch. It, it would be much easier for us to stay at Millercrest. Millercrest is a nice facility. But if we're gonna expand alternative education, destinations, Little Pirates, online learning, we need space. And I don't think the community has the appetite for us to grasp upon to build a new school right now.
Or to put kids here.
Or to put kids, yes, thank you, to put kids here, right? I don't think the optics would be great if there was a tsunami or catastrophic event, adults can get out faster than kids. So just a quick review of board goals. Goals of the calendar, I'll, I'm gonna pivot here. And we do have Michelle Barton, our director of HR online, and she can help with some questions. But I think before we get into the calendar, I wanna thank the, I wanna thank the committee and the group, the stakeholders that worked with Michelle Barton. And Becky was a part of that, and I believe Bree was a part of that, that feedback process. We went into it with these four goals. How do we maximize instructional time? Let's reevaluate the week off for Thanksgiving break. I was not a big fan of early release Thursdays when we didn't have school on Fridays. I, I, I would felt pretty strongly that needed to be a full day of school. And then the, the time on Friday is really important for our teachers and our staff to collaborate. And Bree mentioned that, or no, Becky mentioned that with the math teachers at Marshall Junior High. I was at their PLC last Friday and they were doing a great job. And they were trying to figure out, they were looking at their scope and sequence and their standards, and they were digging in and they were talking about interventions. We need these kids to go there and these kids to go there. And I'll take, these kids are struggling with order of operations. I'll take those kids. That doesn't happen if we don't have that time. It's really important for teachers to get together and talk to people in their department and their grade levels so, so they can strategize. And so those are the four goals going into the, the calendar. Here's how the days are divided up. 190 contract days, 173 full instructional days. Oregon is, if you compare us to other states, we are, we do have a short year. There's lots of conversation at the state level about Oregon student achievement. To be honest, it's part of the reason we're, we're two weeks shorter than most states. So there's less instructional time. If you look at the days, there's more days in the first quarter, that's intentional. The beginning of the school year is one of the hardest parts of the school year for staff and teachers. They've got to get kids prepared and organized and get the routines and the procedures. So you need a few more days. So it's not perfectly balanced in terms of days. But 48, 43, 42, and 40, and those quarters, there's the calendar. It is in, it is in the board post. We've, we've sent it out. We're at the point where we're ready to ratify it. The other thing that we really wanted to achieve is predictability for parents. And I'm, I'm really proud of September and October. If you look at September and October, there's not a lot of colors. There's a lot of full weeks there where kids are in school. Right? And that's not always possible in every month. And the other thing that we have to be cognizant of, we're still recovering from COVID. Right? More instructional time is better than less instructional time. So I'll leave, we'll have a few minutes for questions here at the end. Pivot to Blossom Gulch move. I, I jumped ahead. I believe the last board meeting, I gave you guys a, a kind of a project, a scope of work. Since that meeting, a member, our, our chair had asked for a cost breakdown. I'm gonna go over that. We weren't ready at that time. But it talks about the reason, the, the scope of work, and the milestones. I know this is really hard to read, but just to situate yourself, the top part, that is, that, that corridor on top, that is that part of the building. So that is the south end of the building. So district office staff primarily will be, will be, will move into that hallway. And so we've already started that process. And who's going to what rooms? Obviously, there's lighting, there's flooring, there's painting. To be honest, probably a lot of the rooms will look like this room in terms of carpet and paint. There are some, we met with our IT team, there's some significant IT work that needs to be done. This is, this is an old building. And then that side of the building, the north side, I believe Bree actually has a class there, so there'll be some space there. We'll have to decide what we're gonna do with that later. That is, in terms of your guys' goals, that, that could be space for additional programming. Again, I, I won't get into all the detail here, but here's the cost breakdown. If you look at the bottom right-hand corner, we're looking at about $255,000 in terms of moving down here. Obviously, that, that number can be fluid. You guys know how construction is. Our timeline, we went through a needs assessment. We are currently in the renovation and preparation stage. And then the cost sheets and bids, still, Loma's doing a great job of acquiring bids, transitioning, and really the move will start at the end of the school year. And then we have to start talking about Millercrest. If that's gonna be an education center, it needs to look like a school. Right? Right now, it looks like a district office. It needs to look like a school. And then a year or two, depending on capital projects and funding, what happens to that, that end of the building? Transitioning, mid-year report, I will not go through the entire mid-year report. I, this is gonna be, this, this is riveting reading for you guys. And sit down at home before you go to bed, lots of data and numbers and strategic plans. I thought I would just pull a couple highlights out of, out of the mid-year report. I will also produce an end-of-year report in June. But a couple of things that we're proud of, there's still lots of red, as David has pointed out. I like that he keeps us accountable. But if you look at East Side, this is Dibbles. So this is literacy, this is reading. If you look at East Side at Madison, our kids come in pretty low. Red means they're not at grade level in terms of, of reading. And if you look at the second red bar, there's a dramatic reduction in the red, and the green is growing. That's good. So there's, there's lots of, and I, and I could go, I go first grade and second grade. There's, there's pretty good, there's things to highlight in all those grade levels. But that's, that is definitely an area that we're excited about. Math, Becky pointed out our math. Again, just in general terms, that's K5. So we had our beginning of the year, now we have our mid-year. And if you look at that top circle, lots of red. I can't read those numbers from here. I think it's in the 50s. That red is reducing, that green is growing. That's K5. So in general terms, that means more of our kids in elementary school are getting to grade level proficiency. That is really, really important. And I'm, I'm gonna connect the dots. We've talked a lot about in this group and with principals, the importance of Algebra I readiness. Algebra I is a gatekeeper. It's critical that by the time our kids get to ninth grade, they are ready for Algebra I. So they have access to upper level math courses and they can stay out of remediation. I am really optimistic in the work that is happening at the elementary level that over time, more kids in eighth grade are gonna be ready for Algebra I. And I've set a pretty ambitious goal. Some people have balked at it. I think we need to have 40 to 50% of eighth graders on Algebra I. And we're actually, I think we're at 20%. There's, there's, there's really good growth there. This is sixth to eighth grade math achievement with Sabbath. You can see lots of red at the beginning of the year, and now that red is reducing. And, and Becky is right, that 60 minutes can be challenging to squeeze all that in. And we say, if we can get to 60 minutes, that'd be awesome. There's actually a tipping point if you go too far, right? I mean, I've always said that technology has a purpose. We don't ever want to get away from technology because it can do some things, it can make our lives easier. But I don't want kids in front of Chromebooks all day either. Right? So there, there's a tipping point. So good growth. Our Fs, this is a leading indicator, this is something we track. Principal Ashen is in the room. We talk about this weekly. This is really, really important at the high school level. Kids have to pass classes and they have to graduate. We're excited because most of our grade levels are below the 10% threshold. I'd like it to be lower. But most of them are, that's kind of industry standards, best practices. We are concerned about our 10th graders. At the end of S1, 12 and a half percent, let's just call it 13% of them, then around, had an F in 10th grade. That ninth grade, ninth grade is huge. If you, for every F in ninth grade is a 10% reduction in graduating on time. There's a leading indicator we track. Really proud of our 12th graders. That's, that's good work. There's some good interventions happening there. AP course enrollment, it's trending in the right direction. Growth since last year. The national average for one class is 35%. The state average is 15. Kuzbay is 21%. So we're starting to get closer to the national average in terms of AP enrollment. Pre-ACT, leading indicator, really proud of this. Eight, nine. You guys look, they use different colors. But we want to be in the purple. On target, ACT, leading indicator. If you look at the very end of that horizontal bar, 13 in need of intervention for, for English. So something's working, right, in that area, in that domain. And I want to be really clear, that's not just a height, a secondary thing. Those are elementary teachers. They deserve credit for this in terms of, in terms of reading and literacy. ACT results for 10th graders, again, so three grades, that's a trend. That's really important in data when you look at a trend. Eighth, ninth, and 10th grade, we are strong in readiness in English at the college level. So that's a highlight. This is, and this is a lot of information here, but for a student, I wanted, I'm giving you macro. I wanted to get you the student level. This is what a student's ACT would look like. We're really trying, that left number is composite. We really want to get our kids above 19. Because that means, what, what that means is if your composite score is 19, 20, 21, when you enter SWAC, Oregon State, Southern Oregon University, George Fox, you're ready for college classes. That's why that number is so important. You don't need to take remediation. So 19, 20 is the magic number. If you're in the 30s, we're probably trying to get you to Stanford or Cornell or the University of Chicago, right? We have kids here who are gonna score that high. The STEM is a combination of math and science. That's a new component with, with ACT. Shifting gears, we shared this, this article with you. I don't, I don't want to get political, but I do think it's important as a board. You guys do a good job of that. What is happening at the state level, right? What, what way are the winds blowing? We track all the time the funding and the conversations. I have a weekly superintendent's meeting and we hear, we hear all the time, 11.36 billion is what we, we think we're gonna land. Governor Kotek, it was an 11% increase previously. What she is saying right now is we're not, we're probably not gonna increase education funding. Now, here's what's positive, we all want more money. But here's what's positive, the accountability model that the state is talking about. I believe that we are positioned really well in our district if the state moves forward with the accountability model. Because the things that they're talking about, third grade reading, eighth grade math, on-time graduation, ninth grade readiness, we're doing. We were actually doing it prior to the state. What's, what's concerning is that their accountability model, and I'll, and I'll tell you, I have no appetite to be on the list. I have zero appetite. We love our friends at the Department of Education. I don't want to be on the list. Because being on the list means you're gonna get interventions. Right? And the first, the first year is a coaching model. The second year is intensive and they're gonna start directing some of your funding. So it's really important that we continue to demonstrate growth and proficiency. There, she's actually talking about the Department of Education revamping it, and it's not just about reports and compliance. She wants the Department of Education in districts supporting and coaching. We want their help. I just don't want intensive help from the Department of Education. So just, I think it's important to follow the conversation that is happening at that level. They are optimistic about special education funding, 15% to the cap. That's exciting because we've been underfunded in sped. More money to early literacy and summer school, recovering from COVID. Okay, good thing. So to wrap it up. As I wrap it up, you guys, all of you have done a great job celebrating our classified staff. I can say from my time in a building, I actually would sometimes go to the classified staff first because they always seem to know what was happening before anybody else, right? Sometimes they kind of had a pulse on our kids. And I would go to them as an assistant principal, principal, hey, what's, what's happening here? And they're just a, they're such an important part of what we do in our team. And I could highlight a bunch of people. But I think about, I, I spent some time with Bree, and she's not here, but she's amazing. I mean, she just is kid-centric and thinking about what can we do for kids and how can we help? And just an awesome teammate. And then Loma is just, he's great. He's a hard worker, he's, he's a servant leader, he's a team player. And then Noriega, I don't work with her as much, but I see her when I go to Madison. And she's always got a smile. And as Bree said, she's just, she's just multitasking all the time. It's, it's unbelievable. And I must be getting old because I had her son, or not her son, her husband has a student and an athlete when I was a freshman. So they're getting, they're getting old. Our principals, I asked them to do some testimonies of, and, and obviously there's, there's lots there, but they're, they, they're all just super supportive and proud of the work of our classified people and the things they provide to our kids. Other good things, there was, there's a lot of sports in this, in this good things. The three basketball tournament was here. They did a great job. If you, if you didn't get a chance, the state championship games, it felt like it was kind of old America. The gym was packed. And I always, and I'm sure there's some data out there. I'm always curious on what the economic impact of those tournaments are to our community in terms of hotels and food and shopping. And then the thing you can't quantify, the people come here for the first time to Coos Bay and they come back, right? And so just really proud of the work that, not just Marshfield, there's lots of people that helped put that tournament on. And then Ed Mallory mentioned this, the girls won the Sky End Conference Championship. And that was awesome for them. They, they had a great season, unfortunately lost in the first round to, to Banks out of Eastern Oregon. The boys won. Lots of winning, lots of winning is happening in Marshfield High School. What a surprise. They won the conference as well, and now they're going to the state tournament. They, I think they're number two in the state. The wrestling team won the conference championship, and a number of those wrestlers are going to state. Oh, I thought I had one more here. Oh, and I don't have an on here. But Battle of the Books is, happened at Mila Coma, and I took part in that. And I quickly wanted to know how many kids, what school had the most. And Marshfield Junior High had the highest number of kids participating in Battle of the Books. So lots of, lots of really good things happening. Questions?
David, do you have any questions? Diane?
Um, I don't think so. I mean, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so we were talking about our, our instruction days and how low they are comparatively across the nation. I don't remember what the numbers were.
173.
And so 190 was the average? Is that what you said?
That 190 is the total contract days.
Okay, so what is the average? That, how low are?
Yeah, gosh, that's a great question. It's a moving target. I want to say it's in the upper, um, upper 70s, low 80s.
I think it's 180.
I think it's 180.
180 is generally the number that I've heard bandied about for years.
I think you're right.
So 180, the instruction day is not necessarily the contract day?
Correct.
Where about four days? What, did you say 170 or 173?
173, 173, sorry.
So many numbers. And so do you have any data on the correlation? I mean, I would say obviously correlation between instruction days and higher, you know, test scores and achievement. But do you have data on that and what those, you know, seven days, you know?
Yeah.
Across the state? And I'm sure there's other, you know, variables that go into that because obviously different states have different regulations and.
Yeah.
Yeah, homeschooling taxes is way different in Oregon.
Yeah, very different. Yeah. I, I don't have any off the tip of my tongue, but I, you know, as someone who is immersed in education, generally speaking, the more time kids are in school and in class, you're going to have improved outcomes.
Oh, I, I agree with that. It's just really great to have, you know, the, you know, the studies, you know, from this. And then, and then.
I think a lot of the data comes from the fact that that's what most schools are doing.
Are doing increased?
They're increasing their, like, if, if 180 is the average, that's because most schools are doing 180.
Right.
And, and so they're not going to pay the extra money through contracts if it's not giving them a result.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering, you know, that's a, it seems like that's a stopping point for us. I mean, I'm kind of like, I like the idea of year-round school. Because I think that when you're out of school for that long, I mean, I'm just looking at other countries' data, but how would we get there in Oregon? I mean, that's at a different level.
Well, it is, I mean, it's a local, it's a local decision, but it would be, it would be against the norm in the state, right?
Right, and you're not going to change that. I mean, I.
Arizona is a state that does year-round with more intermittent breaks.
I mean, yeah, and I'm not saying it needs to be year-round, but I think, obviously, I think we do more instruction days. I don't know, that seems beyond our scope if the state doesn't give something about it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think it would be bigger than just, just Coos Bay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, um, let me see if I have any others. I do, but it'll come, it'll come around.
Kevin?
Nothing.
Harvey?
I'm good.
I have a question. And it came up, I was at the site meeting and Dibbles meeting today at Madison. And we were talking about, is it possible to track a cohort of kids from kindergarten through graduation?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And have we done that?
Uh, I don't believe we have. You can do it. Part of it is the resources. You know, I have said this, we don't, we don't have a data team here. Like, a lot of districts have a data department, right? And so they'll have a couple of people, that's what they do. And so when Principal A says, hey, I need data, they're, they're running it. The board's requesting data, they're running it. We, we don't, we look at it all the time, but not in that kind of cohort model longitudinally. But, but grade levels, we absolutely look at grade levels. But I don't, are you talking about a specific group of kids?
Just talking about how it'd be interesting to know how Coos Bay education is affecting each group of kids as they go up. And is there a place where they're falling down all the time?
Yeah.
Um, as we track them through, is there a real pitfall we're finding? It just was a.
That's a great conversation.
Yeah.
This, this goes back to math. Sixth grade is critical for math. So that's an area that our kids will get stuck because it goes from, it goes from concrete to abstract. And so they've got to have a strong mathematical base in, in sixth grade.
Well, we, it came about because we were looking at the numbers and you can see how kids are doing better middle of the year than they were at the end of the year.
Yeah.
And then we, then we started extrapolating, well, are they doing, is each class, are the first graders doing better at the beginning of the year than the kindergarten students? Are the second graders learning enough that they're doing better at the beginning of the year? And we saw it just in that kindergarten first second. It would just be interesting to see it further out.
Yeah, yeah.
I actually have a question too, if I could.
She's the boss, she's.
I know. My, my round robin turn, but, because I was ready. But in some of these growths, I'm just curious, high-needs student population, it says we have a 48% of students experience poverty requiring more wraparound support. So in comparison, do you know where we are as far as like state-level, district-wide with other districts? Like, I just feel like that we have a significant amount here. And how do we kind of face some of those challenges, but still meet, you know, some of these numbers? Because it's, it is sometimes difficult with having that population. And then also the 18% of students having disabilities. Do you know where we compare to other districts?
I don't know about, I don't know, I can't, I don't know the comparison of IEPs. Kayla's here, her on the spot. But I'll hold off. The, the poverty, I was given a, a book when I got here that was produced by, I want to say Oregon State. I got, you gave me one and somebody else gave me one. And when I looked through it, I believe Coos County has the, is the, has the third highest poverty rate in the state. Don't quote me on that. It's, it's really, we're not number one, though. It's a county in Eastern Oregon I believe is number one. But we're really high.
Yeah. They, they come up with a stat pretty regularly about the poverty rates. I can't recall, but it's, I want to say it's around 20%.
Yeah.
Based on the federal poverty, then it's 18 and a half, 20%, something like that. And, and it's, it's not the highest, but we are on the, we're on the higher.
Yeah.
And on rates of disability too, we're, we're up near the higher end of rates of disability. Because that's, that also is.
They put the cap at 20%. Or the Department of Education for disabilities.
There's a lot of health markers that, that are relevant to our community.
It just seems like those numbers would create significant challenges for us here. And not as any means to an excuse or for striving for something better. We always have to keep moving forward, but it can be difficult when students are trying to meet basic needs. Sometimes school doesn't set up that top of the priority.
Yeah, 100%. And I would say were, were the answer, right?
Yeah.
For, for those kids and acquires. I've worked, I've worked in affluent schools and I've worked in schools with high poverty. And I can tell you both of them have challenges, right? But in some levels in communities like this, you, you do have to be better, right? Because, you know, you've heard me say it, the kids who need the most deserve the best.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, our trio representatives, thank you for getting all this.
All right, um, so we're with the Marshall High School Trio. Um, I'm Serenity. Um, I'm, I'm actually a senior. I don't know why it says 11th grade. And I'm one of the upward-bound ambassadors. I'm one of the staffers. I'm also not in 11th grade. I'm 10th grade, and I'm also one of the upward bounds from the ambassadors, yeah.
You guys said no, we weren't going to let you go.
Gigi wasn't able to keep it.
Was she 11th grade?
Yeah, she is. Um, so just a little bit of background first. So the Trio program was started in 1964 as a part of President Lyndon B. Johnson's War on Poverty and part of the Economic Opportunity Act. And it was, well, the first, the first Trio program started was Upward Bound, which was for the exceptionally talented, exceptionally needy students. In 1965, they added on Educational Talent Search, which was the second Trio program. In 1965, it was serving, the Office of Education, it was serving over 50,000 students. 1968, they added on another program, Student Support Services. And that completed the Trio there. There are now seven Trio programs. 1980, Trio programs enroll first-generation college students like myself and you do. Yes, you do. And then last year, Trio celebrated their 60th, yeah, 60th year anniversary. So on the same note as the, like, the poverty rate here, Trio programs, like the ones at, like the ones in this district are super important for students like that. They identify and assist students who are needy. One of the, one of the requirements is that they, like, have higher financial needs, I guess. And Trio supports students from, to help them graduate high school and continue on to post-secondary education. Yeah, low-income families or first-generation college students. And Trio has a bunch of different programs. They, they help out with, like, the college tour, field trips, and career exploration, helping with college applications and scholarships and financial aid, which was super important personally for me. Because just with applications, it's so expensive to even just apply anywhere. Without Trio, I would not have been able to apply to as many colleges. They're very helpful with that sort of stuff. Workshops for skill development, development, mentorship, leadership opportunities, like being a Trio ambassador. Because that was, that's a separate part of the program, I guess. And Alexis and I have done a bunch of different workshops and sort of things to help with our leadership skills there. And then also with SAT and ACT prep, academic support in free 24/7 online tutoring, I guess. Which was also very helpful. I did one of the SAT prep things and I managed to get a 1400.
Nice.
Yep. Uh, so we have a couple of Trio programs in the Coos Bay School District. We have the Marshfield Junior High, Mila Coma, Sunset, Marshfield High School Talent Search, and then Marshfield High School Upward Bound. Which, the difference between Upward Bound and Talent Search there is that Upward Bound students have to be first generation. And the Talent Search students do not have to. Okay. Talent Search, yeah, so basically the eligibility for this, for Talent Search is just being a US citizen or having a permanent resident status, potential first-generation college student and meets the low-income eligibility guidelines there. And then I've heard you talk about all of the services there, so. For Upward Bound as well, we're in Upward Bound and it's overall an amazing experience. It's federally funded and it's for low-income and first-generation students like ourselves. And we have some different services sent, sent different from Talent Search, such as, you know, Summer Amity and, yeah, oops. And overall, Upward Bound is, is aiming towards sending low-income students to colleges and getting scholarships as well. And they're, they fund everything. Everything is free to the students. And we also receive, I can't remember if it's semestral or quarterly stipends as well. It's quarterly, quarterly stipends that, for getting good grades and just for checking in to Trio. It's, yeah, it's very helpful. Um, okay, the outcomes of Talent Search. We have 98% academic persistence, where students, they complete their classes and then they move on to the next level. 91% graduation rate. They graduated on time with a regular diploma. Then a bit lower here, we have 66% rigorous curriculum. They graduated on time with a diploma. It took at least one successful year of a world language. Then lower, 64% is college enrollment. They, the students enrolled in the degrees in the program and they got accepted for federal.
and they got accepted for federal financial aid and it's really good.
And I know it's blocked a little. I think that says a hundred and eighty-three students just out, just uh just at Marshfield High School are in Talent Search.
And they have, they have plenty of trio programs all over and colleges as well. Um the outcomes of Upward Bound, you can see full hundreds there, um academic persistence, graduation rate, rigorous curriculum, curriculum and college enrollment as well. But there are less students since it is specifically for low income students, first generation.
First generation, yes.
But great rates there, yeah.
Who's the guy with the eyebrows?
Oh, that is Dr. Savage. He is very amazing and useful. I check in with him every week, yeah, all about the opportunities and great shout out to him.
Yeah, thank you. Senior Laptop Program. Yeah, so that's, I don't know too much about it, but yeah, it's a, I think that this year, is it, is it just Upward Bound students? No, it's Trio, okay, so it's all the, um basically just trying to get uh, I think this year he said he was trying to get all the senior laptops, so a pre laptop there to, you know, help with the college success and that sort of thing. Yeah, which is actually really cool. I mean Trio just does so many, so many things and it literally, it doesn't cause students anything, which I think is really, really important. Because post-secondary education, like getting into colleges and stuff is just extremely, extremely expensive. And especially for our, um for our community, there's I, it's it's hard for students here to, you know, be able to get the support that they need, both financially and academically. So the Trio programs really, really help um all sorts of students.
Any questions or do you wanna, do you want to talk about our experiences somewhere?
Uh we got the chance to go to New York. Yeah, we went to New York, yes, and toured a bunch of uh colleges over there. It was pretty cool. It was really cool, actually. Yeah.
Did you go to college in New York?
I considered it. Um I ended up going with U of O instead just to be near family, but I definitely considered it. And it it felt like a possibility, just being able to go onto a campus and like see it in person. Because, you know, you think of, one of the ones we went to was Columbia University. And so that just seemed so far away, like impossible for somebody here to go on to. But, you know, when I was on that campus, it felt, it felt impossible. It was nice.
They were very welcoming and they, they explained plenty about the campuses. Yeah, it was, it was really fun.
The Summer Academy thing is uh really, really cool as well. I know that last year they had um incoming, or yeah, the incoming seniors or whatever, um they got to stay indoors on the SWAC campus, get get more experience with that sort of thing too. And um.
You also received a stipend for that.
Yeah, a stipend for that as well. So it's like, it's not only like helping students, you know, have the opportunity to, you know, be able to like have access to these sort of things. It's also just like encouraging them through money. Upward Bound is very, yeah, yes. And the quarterly stipends, uh it's not just for like the super like smart four point O students. It's uh, it's three different things that uh it's participation, uh like grades like A, B, C, whatever that, um and then also just like having your GPA go up or stay in place also additional money there. So it's not, it's not, um, it's, it helps all students. And you don't have to be like super, super smart. You just have to be, um, I guess motivated and, yeah.
I have a question. Justin, is funding for the Trio program come through our budget?
I don't, I don't think so. I think it's primarily all federal.
SWAC programs, the program.
Yeah.
SWAC best?
Yeah, the SWAC program, yes. It's a federal program funded through SWAC.
Yeah, I'm afraid of that federal program. That's what I'm just sitting here, my heart is dropping. It's like, how good this is and how it might go away.
Yeah.
Yeah, cool.
What what I find really interesting is my junior year in high school, um my major project that I had arrived at was on the Economic Opportunity Act nineteen sixty-four. So it's been fun to watch the sixty years of stuff that's gone on with it. And it has um, it has improved. I mean, when it first came out, it was bare bones, but it was, it was really interesting. But I come from a town, Port Angeles, which is a lot like here. It was, it was a really encouraging thing for kids at that time to start thinking about how they could get to college. Because like here, they didn't get out a lot. I mean, you didn't go back to New York and get to see those schools. So it's, it's pretty exciting that they do what they do. It's been fun for my career here to support the D. So it's a great brand. I hope we won't lose it.
Yeah.
I agree. That's a really big important thing. I think it is funded through the Department of Publicity.
Yeah.
Running start is a different one. Washington has a running start. We don't have one. Um but Running Start was always for kids in community colleges. It's a really good program in Washington, but it's funded by the state as opposed.
So now are you an employee of the school district or SWAC?
SWAC.
So then how did you, is there an advisor or some kind of person here at the school district to hook you up?
Yeah, yeah.
So right there.
So you, oh, so you just work, you're paid by SWAC, but you.
I'm stationed at Marshall, yeah.
Nice.
I mean, I'm one thirty-three.
Go back to the casting office and see a sign that says.
And then what about North Bend?
Yeah, do they have a program?
They do have a program. They've got both Marshfield and North Bend, both programs in them.
So do you have Upward Bound? So do you have, do you have an office over there or is there another person?
No, it's uh two other people over there.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm so proud of you. I just met you and I, this is amazing. What a wonderful opportunity. And so you didn't do the six week piece?
I've done it in years before. I just wasn't able to do it the past year, but but when I did it, it was really good.
And so was the New York, was that two weeks in New York or was?
Yeah, it was like two weeks. Yeah, it was, it was in December, yeah, two weeks.
It was a week?
It was one week. It was one week.
Probably felt like two. All the traveling. And so then I saw up here how to support, what what kind of support did you guys need if you could go back one slide? Or maybe, yeah, there it is. If you want to support this program, what are we talking about? Volunteers, money, donating laptops? What are we, what are we looking at?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
The question is, um, we have a call out for support from Dan Veritek. So I just was wondering what kind of support do they need?
Um, she's, she's looking for grant money to to do this. And I believe that, yes, that's the phone number two. Um you can call uh the Trio SWAC, or excuse me, Trio Upward Bound office at SWAC and they'll be able to give you all the information you need. Um I do have a business card to collect contact me.
Arnie?
Yeah, um one of the other programs that they talked about there was that in your senior year, you can go, they'll pay for two courses. Are you planning on paying someone those? That's how, at SWAC, Southwestern, right?
Yeah, yeah. I'm not sure, not sure. I've thought about it.
It's nice that it's someone.
She just wants to finish the year, that's it.
I think I'm gonna do two years at SWAC after school before I'm a, hopefully OSU.
Where?
OSU.
We got U of O and OSU.
Go East.
Have have you guys thought about what you're gonna major in?
Um I'm gonna be an English major with a minor in like communications or marketing. I wanna do like advertising stuff, but specifically like the writing part, like the copywriting.
Great.
I'm majoring in veterinary sciences, that's why I wanna go to OSU. I haven't thought of them. I don't yet, but there's plenty of time in jail as well.
So you guys come back here, we'll hire as an English teacher and a veterinarian.
Yes.
I have a friend who works for attorneys in New York, lives in Los Angeles, writes for them all the time. So writing is a skill that is transferable to lots.
To lots of deals.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I decided English major versus just fully going marketing or something.
Yeah.
There's animals everywhere.
I think that makes perfect sense. Thank you very much. All I need to do is just hear.
Absolutely. Great presentation.
And there are two staff members, SWAC staff members at the high school.
Oh, two?
There are two. It's one and two at the, in the Trio program.
Oh, perfect. So they don't make you do it all.
No.
How many kids in the program? There may be three, right?
Well, in in the Talent Search um program, in my program, it's twenty-seven now.
You're in Upward Bound?
Yes. Uh Gina Watson, I mean, she's in the work phase, so.
Thank you, Dr. Savage.
Thank you. Okay. We're up to our community center proposal. Look at all you words and.
Okay, thank you for having me back. And you guys presented some questions that I would like to answer. So uh the first question was about who's going to own the community center. And that will be a trust. It will be a five oh one secret trust. It will be the Cruz Community Center. A little bit rated, but a decent company. Uh the second question was, how will we be soliciting participation? And how will three individuals organizations to have access to our community center? Well, everybody will have for some areas and uh like courts and spaces will have an online uh system for scheduling. And then uh we'll promote it in different ways. Social media, most later, we have a manager. We have a network of TVs, we'll have probably a hundred by June. And they're all over from Central City to Brookings. Most of them are in Cruz Bay, North Bend. So we have a, a network to promote it. And we have a community app and a website. Now the management and operations, the structure, the community center. So it will be all based on volunteers, but I think because it's a large project, we might have a staff person. We're considering. At the beginning, we were not, because everything that we do today, uh is all based on volunteer. So uh when COVID happened and we didn't have access to facilities, like the schools, uh we rented a place at the mall in probably five years. And since then, we've been learning things. Right now, it's all volunteer based, you know? So we're trying to base on what we do and what the school does to them. And I'll get to that in the next question. You also asked about uh how, who who will make the decision? So we'll have two boards. The trust itself will have its own board, composed of six people. And then we'll invite everybody in the community, uh they're going to an organization, the sports activity, to be part of a larger board, which we'll call the active leaders of the sports and activities board. Uh how the space will be allocated? Well, some groups can have a more uh permanent room, you know? And some will be just for meetings like a day or voice scout, but if we do something like culinary, they'll probably have more permanent than the other. And you also decide who decides and the board, the leaders of the board. So it will be all democratically and participations of everybody in this organization. Uh when it comes, you also ask about if we will deny the space to somebody. Well, we'll have the same system that the school does, you know, like the the high school. We all have in-season sports, off-season sports of the high school and other organizations, you know? So uh we wanna reach out to everyone, but if a facility is scheduled for usage, then they're gonna have to wait. So we will not deny, but I'm sure there will be some pockets like we all face. We uh lack of uh spaces, we lack of uh facilities, so that's a problem that we're having. And we wanna help alleviate that. Uh the funding for the center and also the funding for the long-term maintenance of the project. So the trust will take care of the center. They'll pay for everything, they'll be the trust, and also for the ongoing, you know, some of the expenses will be also paid by the trust. Uh we talked about chapel. No, we're not gonna have a chapel. No. Now, listening to the school district moving here, how can we work together? How uh if uh we can make this work? Well, and it's pretty simple to me. This is your building, you know? You you take what we need and then you tell it, hey, we have this space available for you. And we'll use what you give us, but we're also more interested in building uh the multi-sport facilities in the back. You know, improve the areas and build something bigger. So those were all the questions. Uh very simple. Uh in my head is, you guys have the land. Uh I have a friend that has the funds. He's willing to pay for everything. Uh it will improve our community. It will create great opportunities for everybody. I've been experiencing uh at the mall that uh where we have our community, little community center compared to this. And we are really touched. So many, so many people, we have people who came here from Plain Community College, Portland Community College, Corvance, to play us, you know, to play. At Clamas Community College, we have kids in the month of February, they came twice from Person City and Brookings just to do sports with us. Uh we just added two pickable cords. And we are adding three virtual, uh they're like virtual games. The kids get to interact with the wall. It'll be like two times two and they have to go and touch the balloon with the number four, you know? So it's uh educational and a theory is what we're gonna do, you know? So we have a lot of people involved. We work with many organizations already. You know, the voice scout, they've been there. Cruz Bay Coast Plate's been there. Uh we're gonna partner up with the Chamber of Commerce. They're gonna have, they're bringing the home show pack to the mall and we'll partner it up. So we're gonna have the kids on. So what we're doing now, that is working best for our community at a video scale, would be the opportunity that you guys can support us, you know? So that's uh pretty, pretty simple. I don't know if you guys have more questions. Uh I should also wanna share that a month ago, you guys called me. They went, reached out and said, I wanna come back. It was a day before your meeting, so I said, no. You know, I wanna get ready. But at the same time, since I haven't heard from you guys, I also approached the Northern School. I wanna be transparent. I met with this president, then I met with the president of the board, assistant. And uh we were talking about Oak Street. And they're very, very interested. They were all welcoming and very supportive. And that would be planned me, and they know. And I told them that I was coming back here also, you know? And they know that and they're very understanding too. Uh I also talked to Mayor Benetti, because the city was looking for some land, but at this time, they don't have any. You know, but he's very supportive. And a lot of people, a lot of organizations that I've been talking to are very supportive and they see the need of this. Also builders, I talked to Tom Parmon, I talked to Vivid there, Southport Forest, they're, they're ready. They're ready to help. They're ready to make something happen in our community to improve the quality of these activities and sports for our kids.
Okay, Arnie?
So how big, how big is going to be up there for this?
Probably the size of a soccer field.
Okay.
Yeah, and we have to also add dome, fountain, and just a metal building. Which I just learned that a metal building is almost half the price. And so the dome would have been cheaper, you know? But it's not just that. We also wanna improve like the basketball court that you guys have there. We're gonna put a better floor. We're gonna be probably tennis courts that, you know, we need. And just keep spending like, like I say, what we've been learning at the mall, with our complex, now there was a need to pickable. And you'll see, we'll have the first tournament, mom and kid, and most of them are uh marginal parents that are gonna play with the kids in this tournament on April fifth. You know, so they're coming and practicing and people from that are coming. So it's a lot of new things coming up.
Do you have any questions?
Oh, okay. Uh yes, I do. So we talked about the Dennis Meetup Trust that would be overseeing um, you know, this project. And there's six board members. I was wanting to know how are those board members appointed? Are they elected? Are they not?
Yeah, they're elected. So one permanent. So one permanent member from the Beetham family, and that was on the first proposal. One permanent member from the Lenesma family, and four from the community. I think we should make it official that we'd like to have one member from the school district. I think that, I think we need to work together, make sure that, I mean, we're open to that, we'll like that. I don't know who will do that, we don't want to say, hey, you have to send one, but.
And so then, so the?
And the other three will, will be appointed.
Okay, so appoint, not elected, but?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But we want to have diversity, we want to have somebody from just activities, somebody from education, somebody from sports, you know, for three years, period.
So who points the remaining board members? Would it be the Beetham permanent person, Lenesma?
And the school.
And the school board member, okay.
I haven't discussed with Dennis yet, but I think I would like to have the school district permanent also. But we all have a representative from the school, and that would make sense.
And then you mentioned Oak Street over there is a possibility. Would that be like in the same space as the new football fields?
Next to it. So they still have those two board or two five acres, or kind of like a soccer field is.
Okay, like, like over somewhere away from the Head Start building?
Yeah, on the other side.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's a lot of work.
Yeah. Yeah, we need it. Right now, to me, we have a window, or Dennis is willing to help us with money. And either, you know, you guys have the land. So to me, it makes sense that we need to work together, you know, have a good partnership. If it doesn't make sense, not move forward.
So then, one last question, but it kind of goes, I think it goes back this way, because I remembered that David actually had a question about what the process was. When we have school property lands, you know, is there a process that we need to go through? I mean, we talked about, you know, how does that work? And what are the parameters around that? Is it just first come, first served? Somebody comes in with a plan, and they say, yeah, I'm being facetious, but yeah. Yeah, what, what is that process?
That was my concern again, but it's just, regardless of the proposal, I want to understand the district's legal requirements.
Exactly.
Around this, I guess that would be my initial questions, is really not for Eleanor, the ethos, but more from the district perspective and from our, our legal people. What, what processes should we be following? What are we required to do? I mean, we're, we're a governmental entity. I know from my work, there is a process you have to go through that talks about fairness and equalness in terms of how you do things. So that's, those are my, those would be my same questions is, you know, before, I felt comfortable proceeding yea or nay, I'd want to understand legally, what is the process that we have to follow? Normally, you know, it's a little bit different, because let's have, if you want something, you put out a RFP, and the people respond to it, and you have a public process for vetting it. It's a little bit different than having somebody come to you and say, hey, we want to try to put this together. But I think I would be interested, from a legal perspective, what would, what should be our legal response to that? Do we say, oh, yeah, that's fine? Or do we say, well, you have, there's some other things that we have to follow?
Publicly saying, and is it a little easier to turn over, because it's gonna be a nonprofit? Or if it's not, like, I get what you're saying.
I don't, I've never seen a distinction in the governmental side, whether you're dealing with a nonprofit or a for-profit. I mean, in terms of the equalness about how you're supposed to handle it. But I guess that's what makes me uncomfortable. I, I don't think I could say much until I, I really understand, you know, what, yeah, what is it?
Obligations.
I just know that I, in, in, in my work, if we did something that didn't follow the process in a public body, we would have problems as a board.
Yeah, we're, we're, the community, there are people that voted in.
I think Member Roman also.
Same, same line. We, the nonprofit would own the building, so they own the property as well.
We need to find out what is possible.
That goes back to you.
Well, even if we allow somebody to use property, we're giving a value.
That's right.
And so we need to understand, you know, can, what are the obligations for giving a value like that? So, I mean, if we're giving a value to one organization, without considering other organizations, potentially, that could be problematic. And I think that's where I would want to have somebody weigh in, or that is our legal representation to say, this is the process.
Yeah, I know, problem. Yeah, and I can, we can get that outline, if you guys are requesting that. We can get that outline from legal. I mean, we can't, you're a hundred percent, we can't just bequeath property to people for lots of obvious reasons. But it, it is, there is a process for it, right? It just would have to be very transparent and clear and open to the public. This is, this is a governance issue, right? So you, you guys are weighing in, lot, lots of details. I think from our position, we are, we do have a shortage, we have constraints in term of, in terms of facilities. Anybody who's involved in activities knows the challenge in our community in the spring, and the summer, and the fall, with soccer, baseball, football, all the things, right? The other part of it is, if you're gonna ask me as an educator, because of this location proximity to Marshfield Junior High and Marshfield High School, you know, there's, there's some efficiencies there to maybe get kids here for, for after-school programs. But then there's also, we have land out by Sunset Madison, and there's part of me that says, that's, that's a community out there. That needs a resource.
Earlier, that's how it started.
That's how it started. Yeah. Yeah, and I'm kind of late to this conversation. But there is a process, and I can get that from legal. And we, we just are short in facilities. As much as I'm running for North Bend, I.
And also, also besides having the, the need at a specific time, you know, where we have sports or activities or education on very specific systems, this will open up the doors to do, like, we do soccer all year round. And now, in the last two years, we have two kids going to Lincoln. You know, so we're creating those outlets, you know, that go to farther, you know? So we want to support that, not just in soccer, we want to do it in more, you know, so.
Diane, did you have any questions?
Well, I have a statement and kind of just back onto the land thing too. Just, Alan, thank you for just thinking of the kids in the community and reaching out and, and wanting to give a nice, safe space and for, for all of this community. I think it is important, I think any of us who have traveled to other communities, even some smaller than ours, they have sports complexes, it's, it's very common in the community. I would love to see something like that here. And how that happens, unknown. And just, if there is concern from community or anything about the land, or we obviously need to go through the process, you know, sometimes just having the land sit there is not the best thing. Also, we have probably learned that, you know, there's a population out there that is polluting it, and there's things happening. So that's something also, I think, as a board, that we should consider, making sure, are we hanging on to something to hang on to something? Or is it better to put it to the youth?
Can you build a Cruz-based city library as well?
Kevin?
Yeah, so it's my personal opinion, cannot, school board, you're a corner, so my answer will always be no. That's there.
Arden?
So, I have a different one. And I appreciate a lot of stuff that's not, so I will consider this, and I think I need to find out some other challenges if I can figure out. But the bigger question, at least for this, will soccer be able to play in soccer?
Softball?
Softball?
Is, will there be?
Yeah, we'll, we'll bring everybody in cages, because.
Damiya?
I see these more, a common name of the school, working together, a common, it's not like a drug escape, great model of presence.
Does anybody else have any comments?
Thank you, Al.
Thank you. I do want to wrap up and say, we do have some, some investigation we have to do with our attorney, to see what the process is. The fact that we are in this potential move of buildings will put a hitch in all of this for a while. I don't know how fast we can move on multiple fronts at the same time. And I know a lot of our bandwidth here in the district is going to be focused on moving the two schools and then developing
COVID?
The other one.
Yeah, Northwest.
Yeah, for educational spaces. Northwest, thank you. So if you're willing to wait a little longer to hear, you know, for us to do a little bit more research, we'll get back to you again.
Yeah, sure, you know, that's, that makes sense, you know?
I mean, what I'm hearing from the board is they don't want to close the door on it at this point.
Well, it's great for the community, you know? And everybody that I talk to, I haven't meet one person that says, oh, what?
Yeah, we'll try and represent more than we know, so.
But, yeah, everybody's very supportive, everybody, it's almost, doesn't understand why it's not happening sooner, you know? But, yeah, I'm here to work with the school, and you guys need more time, you know? I do need to get back to.
North Bend. And I don't want, I certainly don't want to shut the door on that. That's something that could move forward tomorrow, and it's something that you're interested in. I think everyone on the board would like to see a facility in the area, rather than saying it just has to be here, but.
And Oak Street is right on the border of Cruz Bay.
Yeah, I mean, Oak Street is a really central occasion.
Yeah, it's not bad. And I'm a community member, I mean, my heart is a market, you know, that I'm here for the kids, and we have the opportunity that Dennis wants to build this, so.
But then you go north them first for about ten years with the same proposal?
No, I talked to Mike Forrester a few years ago, and he said, if Northern grows, that's where they want to build the school. But now that I went back, they were very welcoming and very positive. But I told him that that would be plan B, that I have to respect, you know, that I already brought you guys, and hopefully something else.
I would say, I mean, I think, I think all of us are very clear, there, there are, as you said, there are not enough resources, facilities. I think we all know that, you know, we need some additional resources for kids to be able to be active and play sports. It's a shame in our size of community, how limited space we have to actually be doing that. It's always amazing to be like, in our small community, there really hardly any property available to build anything on. And it's, it's crazy, I, when I went, I, I was kind of looking around, just to figure out available land to do something with. Like, we live in this rural community, how come there'd be, how can there be no space to do anything?
Because, you know, I, I don't know that I've ever heard anything but that complaint from every school district in the world. Nobody has enough space for, for recreation.
It's not just, it's not just the school districts here, though. It's, it's anybody that's trying to develop anything. So it's, it's really across the board.
Any kind of new builds?
Yeah.
And I, we're getting more participation also with kids, actually all ages, you know? So the participation is growing, and also, we're getting more participation from Sunset middle school kids, because most of our sports, at least in soccer and others, are mainly middle coma kids. So now that we do soccer all year round, we're getting a lot of this from Sunset, which is probably the initial goal that we wanted to be at Sunset on that part of the town, you know? And, and I also envision it's doing like long jump, high jump in the winter. I mean, not just, I mean, we need to give these kids this, you know, we have the need, and this is the solution, that's how I see it.
Well, there's opportunities for kids who can afford it with swap facilities. And then Northwest down here has a great training gym, that they, they have a lot of our kids with sports. And then also, then there's the Boys and Girls Club that also has a great space for a lot of events and things. So we do have things that's, I don't want to say that we don't, but there's always a need for more.
Would this be a pay, would, would, would kids pay?
Yeah, little, you know? At the beginning was gonna be, it depends how much money we raise, you know? And we're talking about fundraising. I mean, right now, on the complex, and I'm going by experience in the last five years, we have families coming and practicing their quinceañera dances for free, forty-eight or Boys Scouts for free. I mean, we do a lot, and a lot of kids that participate, they get a scholarship too. So even pickable, there is probably, we started like a month ago, there is probably ten. Well, I know there's twelve families are already playing, and they're gonna have a tournament. But kids before they do soccer, now they're hitting the rackets, because we have different groups and different ages and different times. So there is playing pickleball, and it's nice to see it, you know? And I believe in cross-training, I believe in kids staying active, you know? And this is only one portion that we're talking, we're talking sport. We also want to do, support the other organizations, you know, I talked to Latinx, I talked with, we talked about Roborix, we talked about senior players, I talked to Sarah Stevens this morning. You know, yes, yes, enhancing our community with more opportunities for kids. And adults, I mean, last week, Mary Prozianik was there with Debbie Wright, and Valiant Louis played pickleball. And I haven't seen them in probably ten years, you know, so that was, that was nice.
There, there are some really neat CTE simulators for heavy equipment operators. There's some, for, for kids who want to go into aviation, there's some really good flight simulators. There's, that we just can never afford, right? Super expensive, so that's kind of the other side.
We want to do, I am vision people, just taking a trip, let's go to Mars. You know, everybody do a virtual reality, and just go to Mars, or let's go to Egypt, let's go to a chemistry lab, you know? So it's not just a location, this will be just like a three sixty for all community, you know?
I, I think, again, this is a governor's thing, I'll collect information for you guys, and you guys can have another meeting, have a, get a decision. I do think from a very practical standpoint, as I watch our student athletes juggle practices at Marshfield, we have kids who are practicing eight o'clock at night, eight thirty at night, getting home, because we don't have enough facilities. I've watched kids practice football and soccer, that has a, that does have a toll on kids and families.
So would that, would that, you know, include that our kids would get priority?
Yes, absolutely.
In the, so we would be able to schedule Marshfield and Junior High kiddos, sports priority?
Okay, we'll definitely have another hearing on this at some point. So let's move along right now, because we are getting late into the evening. Alan, thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll get back to you.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Okay, policy updates.
All right. Favorite party? Yeah, I'll be, I'll be brief. Are there any prospective policies for review that anyone would like us to consider? Wonderful. Onto first readings for adoption, OSBA recommended. We are now on to, except, except for IKJ, that was one that we had. I needed to talk to the tech cadre and get their expertise on our artificial intelligence policy. They had approached me seven or eight months ago about that policy, and I knew OSBA was in the works, so we kind of held off until we had a boilerplate one from OSBA that we could tweak. So we've done that now with IKJ. The rest of them are from our policy analysis that we received back. First look at it, it was a bit alarming, but as I go through the details, all of the ones that are, that were flagged that said they're, they're required, but we, we didn't have, they're in the process. They just hadn't been adopted yet. Or they're conditionally required, and we don't meet the conditions. So that was good news, we're not out of compliance. Then, there was about a hundred flagged for review. Some of those were flagged just because we haven't updated them in a while. So it's just like, hey, you should look at this again and make sure it still meets your practice, not that you're doing anything wrong. So when I saw a hundred, I freaked out a little bit, but it's okay, we just need to look at them. And then I'm, I'm working on, there's about a hundred that need deleted, so we're chipping away at those. And they're just, they've either been merged into other policies, or they're no longer required. So on, yeah, first readings for adoption, we have use of a district activity vehicle for student transportation. I think there was one word change there. GBM is staff complaints. That was one that OSBA had directed me to delete prior, and that was a mistake on their part, we shouldn't have deleted that. So you guys deleted it in November, we found out about it, it's back here now to be readopted, no changes. Actually, wait, there was one change, because the AR did get deleted, so it was referenced. Actually, wait, there was one change because the AR did get deleted, so I, and it was referenced in there, so we made that modification. Uh, but other than that, no, no substantive changes. GBNA, JHFF, suspected sexual conduct with students and reporting requirements, uh, that was one, um, from our analysis that we adopted as well, or, or is up for adoption, excuse me. Um, the next ones, I won't go through all of them, they are, um, the policies for first reading for deletion and they are all ones that were marked by OSBA. In that policy analysis as either being, um. Other be, they're either wrapped into new policies or they're not required, so that's why they're on here, and we're doing it at least ten a meeting. Um, but I hope to do more of the deletions so we can just hammer them out. I'd like to start our next fiscal year with a fresh, fresh move. First readings, board member recommended, this one was brought up in prospective policies for review, um, and it was, the gist of it was. Board members should be able to go to games and activities to discharge their duties as a board member without having to pay. Um, so what this policy did, we actually had a, this policy BHD, it just had different language, it didn't go into the specifics, so we took some language from another OSBA policy. I believe it was a core values, Kevin? I believe it was core values, um, and it, it actually dictates what your role as a board member is at the event.
Right.
And provided that you are fulfilling those roles, that's how, Arnie, I know you had a concern about compensating for board member, we're gonna be very clear, you're there as a board member, as your duties as a board member, here's what you need to be doing. So provided that's happening, we think that should be, uh, should be squared away and we'll run it through legal before it's adopted.
That means we're gonna put your work, remember, roll on.
Because we know parents don't ask you questions normally, right?
That's right.
Arnie just shuns them off and no, I'm here for, I'm not a board member tonight.
I'm watching the game.
Well, that's it for first readings, did anybody have any questions?
I, I just had, uh, you know, I. I, uh, maybe I'll just give you some feedback, there's, there's, there have been some questions, um, from some of my, my work, my day job people around the requirements around, um. Suspected sexual conduct and reporting requirements.
Uh huh.
It has created some confusion and I, I read through the policy pretty clearly because it's a little bit narrower than sometimes it's being interpreted and, and just because from the outside. This policy designed to keep the district safe from, from actions that might be concerning students and that's, so, but, um. But I think it's being used something a little bit differently sometimes, so maybe I'll just give you guys feedback for you to consider in the policy committee around that.
Yeah, and you'd be welcome to come join us for policy committee if you'd like and we can.
Can I come in and do my part for you?
You're at the end of the agenda.
All right.
Yes, well, uh, thank you, yeah, we will, we will bring you in. Uh, any other questions?
Arnie?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, moving right along, public input. Seeing none?
I forgot to have a sign up sheet, but any of you three have public input?
Online is raising their hand, all right. Actions to consider, I believe we need a motion to adopt the school calendar, is that what you're looking for?
Uh, yes.
I would like to make a motion to adopt their twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar as.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Arnie? David?
Hi.
Kim? Diane?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
And chair votes aye also, so the twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar is adopted. The twenty-five, twenty-six contract renewals.
And you will find that in your board packet, uh, near the end, it starts on page. Sixty-eight.
Yes, yes. So I move that we approve the contract, uh, extension as included in our board packet.
A second? Great. Uh, these are contract renewals for twenty-five, twenty-six, is there any further discussion? David?
Hi.
Diane?
Hi.
Kim? Kevin?
I didn't get a chance to, so I could just abstain or.
Arnie? And I will vote aye.
I didn't catch who seconded that motion.
Diane, yeah. And Kevin abstained.
Thank you.
Okay, board items. And so I agree has left, I hope she is home online. Because I would like to read on behalf of the district, our proclamation on ongoing classified employee recognition. Whereas the education of our youth stands as a cornerstone to the advancement of our community, state, nation, and global society. And whereas our classified employees, the vital foundation of our public education system, play an indispensable role in cultivating a thriving learning environment. And whereas these employees engage directly with students, educators, parents, volunteers, business partners, and community members. Significantly contributing to the holistic development of our students. And whereas the diverse contributions of classified employees encompassing administrative support, facilities, maintenance, and transportation services. Are essential to the efficient operation of our educational institutions. And whereas our community trust and reliance on the dedicated service of classified employees to our student body remains steadfast. And whereas through their varied skills and unwavering commitment. Classified employees consistently nurture and support students throughout their educational journey. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Coos Bay School District Number Nine Board of Directors. That we affirm our commitment to ongoing recognition and appreciation of the invaluable contributions of our classified employees. Extending beyond the traditional observance of classified appreciation week. And be it further proclaimed that the Coos Bay School District Number Nine Board Directors calls upon all members of our community. To provide continuous recognition and appreciation for the tireless dedication and exceptional work of these indispensable individuals. Let this proclamation serve as a permanent testament to our enduring gratitude and profound respect. To the essential contributions of classified employees to the education and well-being of our students and community. Now it's adopted today and signed by both myself and the superintendent. We are sincere in our belief that you are the cornerstone of our educational system. Okay, board member highlights. David?
Uh, I'll pass tonight.
Diane? Kim?
Um, I had the opportunity to attend, uh, OBob at Sunset and, um, I got to, um, actually participate and ask questions and that was very exciting. I'm volunteering for the tournament, which is this coming Saturday and, um, I saw the proof from Catherine and, and, uh, you know what? Put my family to work, so we're gonna, we're gonna be going and those kiddos are so smart, I can't even remember the books that I'm currently reading. Reading them, I'm, I don't even remember the names of them, but they remember so much.
The details, pretty.
Oh, the details are crazy, so, um, we have them on to a competition, um, there is this one Sat-, the Saturday at Marshfield. And it's, um, a regional competition, so there'll be kids from everywhere and it starts at nine AM, so.
Yeah.
Where are, where's the, where? Someone right there.
We're in, we're in the library.
In the library.
Probably, yeah.
I know I have a training, I'm a person, I'm hating it, so, yeah, she, she provided food, so you know how I am about. This is a good motivation, pancake meal.
Okay, Kevin?
Yeah, I was gonna touch on the facilities committee, uh, if you want to get out and get in on the schools, I think our next one isn't it for scheduled to do a tour? Or we don't have it locked in yet, but.
Uh, all of the times I had locked in were with Brian, so I'll need to, oh, rehash with Oklahoma, but, but yes, we will do another, our next one will be a tour. Where that's gonna be, we're gonna let.
And which, which schools have we, I know I was, was in Oklahoma, but what, for the schools you haven't toured this year, or which ones have you already toured?
We did Marshfield.
I know, did you guys go in the tunnels in there?
Yep, yeah, everybody has, oh my.
They gotta sign the wall and everything.
I didn't even know I was on that committee. I thought I was on the committee and I wasn't showing up.
Well, it is open, I mean, I don't know, there's too many to pass a court, you can't, it's not like, uh.
Yeah, I was, I was the only thing, you can't have more than four. Yeah, we still have Eastside in Madison, we have it too, and then we can get in destinations and, yeah, school too.
That would be great, okay, thank you for that.
When does that, is that May, is that May first is the next one?
Do you know when that is? Oh, it's on or?
Um, it would be.
No, it's not.
Yes, because I hadn't.
Yes, sorry.
And it'll be yet, um, but the one I have with Brian would be, it's usually the first Thursday at that one, so. Well, it should be. Should be April third.
Okay.
Um, so that's what we're gonna say.
Okay.
And we will schedule it, Oklahoma.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Arnie?
So, um, I was out of town, um, I woke up in Washington because my. Wife's brother's daughter was running for the queen of the swim irrigation festival.
Wow.
And the swim irrigation festival is an irrigation festival and the longest serving festival in the state of Washington, a hundred and thirty years old.
Wow.
When they built them, they were the longest irrigation diggers in the country. If you ever go to Swim Valley, they, they are still there, it's pretty amazing, but they only get ten inches or less break and the rest of the place is seventy or eighty, but it's an interesting place. Anyway, so we went to this big thing and she did her, and she won, which was amazing to the sophomore, so now the queen of the irrigation festival is gonna be part of the face of the night. Um, for, for Marshfield, uh, Steve Gray holds a, uh, a blast of museum on the history of the South Coast and so. He had gotten some questions because this particular historical that was about monsters, goats, and swimming pools.
And swimming pool.
Okay, Marshfield swimming pool.
And so they wanted to know, and so he called me, he said, you want to write something, I said, no, but I'll come here for you. I didn't realize I had to win, there's like sixty people in there, it's pretty amazing, you know, people going to this. So he gave them the input on Marshfield swimming pool, that's a high school, I gave them the issue about the towns. I talked to them about the, um, cemetery and how on Halloween we used to always go out in the cemetery and spend some time. And we'll talk about the nineteen eighties, I guess it was, seventies, eighties, we had, um, a bunch of wickens, the, the penny stuff in our area. So we would come to school early, they clean the, er, eviscerated animals off the playground.
Oh, goodness.
Out in the graveyard, they'd be all over the, so we'd go clean them up before the kids got there.
You need to read a book.
Hanging animals from trees, they'd go down the stairs, so we had to take care of all this stuff before the kids got there. And, um, it was kind of fun, um, the swimming pool is still there, it's covered up now, it's parking lot. So when they built in nineteen oh nine, when they built the high school up on the, what was the east front? Uh, a year and a half later, they built a gymnasium, it was in the same parking lot. So it was just to the east of the gym that is now and, um, had swimming pool in the basement, though they said you couldn't dive because you would, you had to sit on the ceiling, so it was a small swimming pool. Right then had one of the same kind, theirs was covered up and filled in. But it was, it was the book about story for all of our old books when I was there, seventies, eighties, and so, um, and it was the, the gym floor was the working place of maintenance people. So we took that down and so it's no longer there, we took it up, uh, and it's filled up with swimming pool with dirt, so it's not there anymore, so.
You're blessed. I've watched you very, I love him, I love the.
He is really great.
I wouldn't know you were coming.
There you go.
They did the eviscerated animals.
I love it.
Mallory wouldn't have been.
Yeah.
Mallory would not want to be a part of that.
Yeah. Not humans.
That's true. Marshfield's earliest exchange student was there, Miss J, because he is married to the Abar's sister. He's a talent, that's engineer. And when they were, their kids were in high school and elementary school, they decided they wanted to have their American citizenship as well. So they would send them back to where their grandparents were, and they would find people in the community that had kids the same age. So my son Aaron and Elko were the same age, so we had Elko for forty different years, for half a year, he came here, he was the only guy I've ever had. My only kid I could say was an American Olympian, he was a field hockey Olympian in Atlanta when. A neat family, wonderful people, and they were visiting, which I didn't know that that is, so that's what they thought their, his mother was passing later. So, anyway, they were, uh, it was great, good to see him because he came with his sister and his brother and.
Wow. Wow.
So, but it was fun events because there's lots of people, you guys would know.
I do, I have a comment, when you do release your memoirs, will you let me know? And maybe your daughter could ghost write them for you, you know, and save you some time. Because I think every graduating senior probably should get a copy of Arnie Ross's memoirs and just keep it going.
Some things are just left, okay?
Okay, I have more things for you guys to do at Madison, on, uh, May, what day is this, May twenty-first, it's a Wednesday at seven in the morning. They're doing goodies with grownups, it's food.
Okay, it's donuts, all right, I'll go.
Yep, seven AM.
Seven AM. Madison.
We talked a lot about, um, the activities that they're doing for turn off the, you know, turn off your.
Electronics.
Electronics week, which is the first week of April, I think, and, or May. Yep, May, and so they have a bunch of things planned, um, a pool party, all those things to invite community and to get in community involvement in the school.
I noticed that a person writing for school board is on our list, so, um, Mr. Roski, I guess this is what, unless.
I'm right here.
Oh. Well, thank you for being here and thank you for putting your name in for the.
Yeah, I was gonna stick around to the end so I could introduce myself, I'm Derek DeGroski, I'm a surgeon and a doctor at Madison Center. Um, and I brought a, Dr. Adrian and this woman that they filed for position five.
Thank you.
Your wife is online.
She is online.
She works for us. She used to be.
Yep, she used to be on our board committee.
I used to call her the super volunteer at Madison.
Yes, that's right, yes.
She's now working for you.
We're lucky. Yay.
Okay, is there anything else on the agenda, seeing none, this being?
I just wanna, so April third, if our scheme will already that, um, our folks are.
It's what, April third?
For we're adopting, um, JJ Briggs, thousand ninety-eight, and less in both. Um, one of our, uh, four units was gonna be adopted, but unfortunately we would out, not make it, so we're still in the. Well, yes, we'll apply, but we'll be all, I guess, and JJ, they do, it'll be in the evening, uh, but during the day, we have a period where students come in and they do a presentation. Speak about their careers and the impact they're seeing on people, maybe, and, you know, why we, why we want to honor.
Yeah, that's perfect.
What's JJ doing then? What are they doing right now?
Oh, right, that is a question, I'm not sure, no, I mean, I know why they're adopted. Why are we in it?
Um, it was, uh, honored for their, uh, for his bravery, uh, during, um, urgent treatment. He also, he is the, the coachess, he was a fan of the all different. He also, he is the, the coachess, the head of the team.
Chair, why don't we ending this meeting here? This could be.
We're all so curious at this point.